Slowly but surely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am losing my leg here. All right. Well, I had a chance to take a look at our regular agenda. It's pretty small this month. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
I'll move.
Mr. Giefer to move. Do I have a second, gentlemen?
Second.
John?
Councilmember Carr?
This is for just the regular agenda?
Yeah, moved right into regulars. We've got regular first, then consent.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Carr, do you vote yes on the regular agenda?
Um, yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giefer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tufti?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye. Now we move to the consent agenda. I'm sure you've all had a chance to take a look at it, our bills and everything else in there. And if you have any questions, now's the time. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To reconsider the, uh, motion from last month's meeting.
Okay.
Regarding the city engineer, um, and his appointment. If, uh, Kim can find a place to fit that in later in the meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that would have been an addition to the regular agenda, not the consent agenda?
Yeah. Consent agenda is stuff that we don't normally need to discuss. It's bills and that type of thing. Um, in order to do that, you'd have to come down to, and Kim, uh, just go ahead and correct me where I'm wrong. Under discussion items from city council, could that be added?
Well, it won't be a motion. It won't be an action item.
I realize that, but we can add it for next month. Or no?
I think that's what you were, you weren't arguing the consent agenda. You were just making that comment.
Or were you trying to put it on the regular agenda? Is that what you were trying to do?
What are we trying to do there?
I'm not sure we fit there, but, uh...
But we could do it at the end. Just do it at the end? We already approved the regular agenda.
I'm gonna note that the contract is designed, it's in place, so...
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm not quite sure what you want to discuss, but we can certainly discuss at other places. If you would like to reconsider your vote, that's going to have to be on another regular agenda, and we would have to break that contract, which has been signed. We already voted to approve it.
I'll make some notes during staff updates on this issue. Okay?
Alright.
Yeah, let's do that. So, uh, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Recording in progress.
Oh, boy. That's not great. Do we have a second on the consent? We're not gonna redo it, gentlemen. Giefer?
Giefer. Oops, sorry.
Rog?
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giefer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tufti?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye. Thanks, Kim. City planner Jennifer Swanson, do we have you?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Hello, I am here.
Hi, Jen.
Let's see here. So, I'm using a different laptop, so it's more easy this evening. My video is a little bit choppy, so I may turn it off actually for the presentation to make sure that it comes through. Alright, so before this evening, we actually have a request for a final plat, uh, from Stillwater Oaks. So, we looked at this around eight and a half ago. It was, I think, about 2022 when this first was presented, uh, and came through via preliminary plat. Uh, during that time, uh, we had several comments and conditions that were noted in the resolution, uh, to grant the preliminary plat. Obviously, one of those things being, uh, that a development agreement was executed in conjunction with the final plat. So, this evening, we are taking a look at both the final plat and the development agreement that was in your packets. The staff report, uh, in your packets identified, uh, I think it was eighteen or twenty different conditions of the preliminary plat. The vast majority of those have been taken care of. Uh, those that have not been taken care of either were brought forward into either the final plat resolution this evening or within the development agreement, uh, which are prepared and ready for your review. So, uh, both the city engineer and, uh, the city attorney have reviewed the development agreement, uh, and are comfortable with it. The development agreement was also, uh, presented to the applicant, uh, the developer, uh, who is in receipt of it and is aware uh, of the conditions that are identified in it. Uh, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what we've looked at prior, uh, when we've had other final plats. Uh, the key is that the final plat has to match the preliminary plat essentially, uh, you know, lot lines, road configurations, access points, et cetera. Uh, when we did the review, it was determined that the, the plat itself is relatively consistent and essentially matches the preliminary plat, and that those items that needed to be updated or addressed were addressed, uh, as part of the final plat package. So, the other pieces that are of note, uh, with respect to the final plat are, uh, the watershed district's review. Uh, it's our understanding that they do have preliminary conditional approval of that, uh, all permitting, uh, with respect to that stormwater, uh, into the watershed actually are also a requirement and identified within the development agreement. Uh, that's very similar to how we've handled other projects like the gateway, uh, and farms of Grant. Uh, the other piece of it is they are proposing to actually do this in two phases. So, you'll see on the final plat, when you take a look at the graphic this evening, that, uh, essentially the portion that is north of Eighty-Eighth, uh, is in an outlot. That outlot would be platted in the future, uh, into eight lots. That, that plating process, uh, will happen, um, you know, in a year or two years. At that time, that's when the road or the new cul-de-sac would go in, in effect, uh, for that portion. That's the northerly part of the subdivision. Uh, and then the seven lots that are proposed as part of this phase one are, are identified south of Eighty-Eighth. So, when you take a look at the way the letter of credit is established and developed, it's actually all around those improvements that are in phase one as opposed to both phase one and phase two. Uh, so when they come back for phase two, we would amend, uh, the development agreement, uh, to address the phase two lots. So, I think that's a pretty broad overview of, of what you're taking a look at this evening. Uh, if you have any specific questions with respect to the final plat or the development agreement, I am happy to answer them.
Gentlemen, questions for Jennifer. Looks pretty straightforward to me, but you might have some concerns.
Yeah, I got one question. Jennifer, what was, I thought I read in here there was a variance or something. Was there a variance in this? I think I read language in here, something about a variance. Was there a variance?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there weren't, there was not a variance on this one, so, uh, if some language got carried over from a different, uh, either, you know, project, I, I do know that we were looking at, especially for the development agreement, we used a template, so if there's a reference to a variance, that should be removed from there. Uh, there was not a variance on this one.
Yeah, 'cause I read through here and I couldn't find one. I kept, I should have highlighted that language, 'cause I'm missing that, but okay.
No, that's fine. As long as there wasn't one. Good. Okay, thanks. That's it. Jennifer? Thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we're glad, glad to see you show up tonight. Um, phase one and phase two off of McUsick first. And just a very general question for you first. Um, I did read through the development plan, but I kind of would like to hear you say it. Uh, all the mitigation as, uh, required by other authorities has been completed. Is that correct?
Uh, with respect to the environmental mitigation or...
Yes.
It's my understanding that that is correct, that, uh, they haven't done the mitigation that was required. Uh, we did have in our preliminary plat resolution that they need to provide documentation of what was done out there, uh, and for the city engineer to review it. So, uh, I believe that carried over as well, and that is still something that, um, we need to, to have documentation and put it in the file, but it's my understanding that it has been completed.
Okay, excellent. And, and just a, a quick follow-up to that, that mitigation has already taken place in phase one. Has any mitigation taken place in, in phase two, and has that been completed?
Uh, you know, I would have to confirm with the developer, but I, I actually do believe that it was completed in both phase one and phase two, uh, based on what my understanding is. Uh, again, we'll make sure to get that documentation. If it's not been completed for phase two, obviously, that would need to be completed prior to us granting a final plat on that phase as well.
Exactly. And I just wanted to, to make sure that that was out there and everyone understood that, that this developer has done the mitigation required by the MPCA, and, uh, is most likely done with the second phase as well. I'm pretty sure I ran across that here somewhere. But, uh, even if it has not been done yet, as you say, it will not be, uh, developed, dug and, and foundations poured for about a year or so. So, plenty of time to get that done and to have that within the conditions of the development plan. So, Jennifer, thanks for that very much. That was about my only question. I think Mr. Rog might have a question for you.
I do, um, and I just, uh, was looking at the picture, so I'm gonna pull it back to the, um, uh, language. It says, uh, number two applicant must approve that portion of McUsick, uh, in Eighty-Eighth Street North identified with the city engineer. How much are we talking about here? I was trying to determine that from the picture, and I can't really ascertain that really clearly.
So, I would actually need, uh, Brad, excuse me, Brad, to confirm. Uh, he worked with the developer on how much of that portion of road would be, uh, improved, uh, as a contingency to the development approval. And that, that discussion happened as part of the preliminary plat approval. Um, and so Brad looked at the plans, the final plat plans, uh, and reviewed it, said it looks consistent with what they had discussed on the preliminary plat. Uh, but I would actually need Brad to confirm exactly, uh, how, what that distance was, if you will, what that lineal footage was.
So, then I'll, I'll do a follow-up. So, let's say hypothetically that they are doing from, uh, the intersection, uh, which is the stop sign, all the way to where they are entering. Can the city use some funds for doing another portion of McUsick while they're doing that?
That is another discussion to be had, independent of this discussion, but you do have that, right? Brad Reistec, our engineer that we've capped, negotiated from Highway Ninety-Six past their entrance and on Eighty-Eighth, from where it tees up here, all the way down to their entrance and pass. That's even a longer stretch than what is out on McUsick.
So, they, so they have two entrances, obviously.
Yeah, it looks like about a quarter million dollars' worth of improvements that Brad got for us riding on top of this development agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah. Good question, John. And, and one second, Jennifer. Your, your additional question there would require an additional piece to one of our agendas in order to discuss that. And certainly, if you were to discuss it with the clerk beforehand, I think she could kind of talk you through the parameters of that.
Right. Well, just in our, what we were talking about earlier.
Yes. No, no, and, and Kim would be the one to kind of bring you up to speed on those types of things, so I think that would be the way to go.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen? Okay. Kim? All right. I'd like to make a motion for the Stillwater Oaks residential development project, and I do not have that number in front of me. Someone will have to help me.
To 2024-05.
Thank you.
I'll motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second for this fine development? Mr. Tufti?
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giefer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tufti?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye. Thanks, Kim. That is gonna be a nice development there. It's gonna be tucked away. I am jealous for the people that are gonna have lots there. That is gonna be a really, really nice development. They will fly out of there like fresh baked bread, I'm sure. All right. Ah, da, 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 da. No action items, don't have any new business, unfinished business, doesn't look like it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have got the development agreement, five A two.
Five A two. Ah, that was our plat. I'm sorry.
I need two different motions for those items.
Yep. Who would like to make a motion for the Stillwater Oaks development agreement? Gentlemen, are you happy with the development agreement?
We gotta make another motion.
Gotta make a motion. Need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Tufti?
I need to develop.
There you go. And a second. John, you happy?
I'll second it.
Alrighty.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giefer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tufti?
Aye.
Mayor Huber?
Aye, of course. Now, what is your second one, Kim? What is that one? I thought we already did that one, or the third one. We already did the 2024 final plat.
That was the resolution for final plat.
For final plat, yeah, so there's only two agreement, which is done. That's it.
We didn't do two separate motions.
Oh, gotcha, 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 gotcha. Yeah, I got it. I got it now. I'm sorry, I was confusing the two. I thought you had something else. I'm looking at these two going, hey, we're done. You're trying to keep, make me keep going. Yay, thank you. Staff updates?
Oh, I got a lot. I'm gonna keep you guys here all night.
Oh, good. Glad to hear it.
Let's see. I mentioned, uh, your pathholding, patching contracts, so you are aware of that. Um, the, your assessor is working through the end of the assessing season, which is till the end of May, and he is retiring. So, uh, I, I kept him on board as long as I can, so, um, I will be getting some bids for other private assessors. Um, I certainly can obtain a bid from Washington County if you would like, however, I will, it's gonna be more expensive. But if you want that bid, that's fine.
It seems as though, have a quick discussion on this real quick. Um, it seems as though we've done quite well with a private assessor versus Washington County. We did save significant dollars on that and did not miss any of the imputed services that Washington County has told us that we would receive in the past or were, were receiving. I can't notice a difference between what I'm saying between the private and the, and the county. So, uh, what are your thoughts on that? Guys, just go out for bids on private or what?
Seems to make sense.
Yeah. Kim, say it now.
I just wanted it to be clear. I, I am going, I'm getting bids from two private. I just want to know if you would like a bid for Washington County.
My next question was gonna be the county one, so, yep, got it here. Gentlemen?
Tom either has a question or he's gonna do some sort of...
I'm opposing this way. My arm doesn't move, yeah. Um, yeah, we've, I've had private, it was horrible experience, and I've had private, the last one is a great experience.
Oh, he's...
And I've had Washington County, and it was a fine experience. So, I think we gotta get both.
Okay.
Okay. Gentlemen, that's one out of five. You wanna talk to the county and private or just the privates, as we've been using for the past eight years or whatever?
Same person gonna stay on?
No, he's retiring. We have to go out and find some other private guys or go back to the county, which we drop for cost.
We're just talking, getting bids here, right?
Just bids, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
I guess I'd be okay going with the private, and we can always add the other one.
The county.
If we need it.
You're getting a bid from the county as well.
Okay, then I also have, um, yeah, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, noise about the agenda item last month. Um, and I just want to clarify what that agenda item was.
Yeah.
That agenda item was about Brad Reistec, period. It was not a contest or a competition between WSB and LHB. Um, I only did the information, got the information and research from Brad about costs and services. If they could do the same things WSB would do, and if he would be retained as the city representative. Again, this was not a competition. It was not a contest. The question was put to you guys, do you want to retain Brad Reistec? You could have chosen, that perhaps didn't pass, you could have chosen to go out and get bids. You could, we already had the pricing from WSB. The question before you was, do you want to retain your current city attorney, who can do the same things with another company, who negotiated a quarter of a million dollars for, and road improvements for new development, who is ninety-five percent through the Knollwood project, which is going to be before you next April? That question was answered. It was a three-two vote. You didn't all agree, and that's fine. Um, but the contract has been signed and Brad is in place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Also, uh, there's been rumors, okay, guys, here we go. Let's start with the election fund. Love this. It has been so cohesive and so nice with you guys, and again, you always don't agree. That's fine. Uh, there's questions and rumors out there about election costs and special election costs. It was noted and it's out there. People are being told and people are asking me about it, uh, that a special election is costs about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, that is a standalone election, municipal election, special or odd number of years. That cost is twenty-five sixty-eight per precinct, along with all the other costs, which is fifty-two hundred about for a regular election. Um, you also have all the election judges, legal publications, additional polling equipment, that is based on actual costs, so you add all of that. And you also have the additional costs that you don't have in general elections of them taking care of the absentee, uh, pollings, vote, uh, voting, postage, supply costs. Any absentee ballot that is, is mailed is three dollars per ballot. Any absentee, uh, ballot that is, that they go with the county and you put in the machine is fifty cents. Um, you have a lease cost of those absentee, uh, equipment boxes of sixty dollars. And then you have additional equipment, lease fee of voting, tabulation machine, assistive voting device, electronic roster. Um, when you add all those costs up, it is much more than just a general election. So, I just want to clear that up, um, again, it's election time. The last thing I have for you guys is, uh, cleanup day has been set for May fourth, nine noon here with Maronies.
May fourth?
Yep, first Saturday.
May fourth, first Saturday.
That's all I have.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Uh, it's being advertised in the, uh, city newsletter that yes, you guys will be there cooking hot dogs.
Yeah.
You don't really have a choice.
You've already committed me, huh? Yeah, just a couple of words. Um, yeah, election season's coming. Some people would like to get back on how that would happen. I would have no idea. Um, but we start to get speeches and fact patterns where about half the facts are given, maybe a third, if we're lucky.
Then you have to do the research to figure out what the rest of the story is, right? And then you get the rest of the story, and the numbers I saw were closer to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, a little less than I thought, but not twenty-five hundred. And of course, all this stuff will be brought out in the end. It'll all come forward. That's what I specialize in. I love that stuff. That's why I like elections. They're so much fun.
Oh, I know.
I do. I do, especially up at the table, on TV is where I like elections. Okay, that's enough of that now, gentlemen. Um, John, if I'm not mistaken, you read our community calendar last time, but you got, hey, Tom, hang on a second.
I see council reports.
Hang on a second, buddy. Hang on a second, buddy. Yeah, I started. Go ahead.
Well, I was, I was gonna bring up, um, what I brought up last time about a potential, um...
Yes, you had talked about that, John.
He's been speaking to the owner of the guest house.
Okay.
He's very interested in working with us. Um, he is, uh, doing a lot of background things. I guess he sold the land, uh, that was across the street where we used to park.
Oh, yeah.
But he's talking to them, 'cause they were on vacation, so he's working a lot of things and, uh, giving us good price on food and everything. So, you know, there's some things that were in place, but at least he has a date that is open for us.
And if, and if that does not work out, John, I'll tell you, I'd be willing to support anything that gets people together down here, whether it is after cleanup day, a picnic, potluck down here with kids playing ball, or just coming down here and meet and greet. Uh, the other thing I was thinking, I had always planned to put my nose to the grindstone and do some sort of a farmer's market down here. The other thing you could perhaps do here is a tack swap. Lot of horses in this town. People might wanna sell tack. People might wanna do things like that, and it's really concentrated here, you know, to the benefit of our residents. So, I'm just throwing those out there for you to think of, if some of this stuff doesn't work out. I would support any and all of that. So, um, yeah, certainly there. Uh, anything else, gentlemen?
Can we just talk about a couple more questions with John? So, is, uh, is he the person to talk, the current owner of the guest, is he, um, planning on, like, doing all the, he just wants to know, like, if we'd be willing to participate? Like, 'cause it's a lot of, I think it's a lot of work, more than I was probably thinking initially. Is he willing to take all that on? Like, what kind of partnership is he looking for, the city and all this?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, if, if we were, we're trying to figure out the number of people, and he looked at the old things and it was about two-hundred-and-fifty people. I don't think we're gonna have that many, but it's about headcount and food, and he had, uh, he kept open the first Saturday in September for us. Um, so, uh, but we just gotta, I, I have a lot of details, but I don't know if I should share them right now, or, uh, we can talk about them later. But, uh, he's very interested. He's, he's, he wants to advertise. He's gonna do all that, supply the people, um, everything. Um, it just, you know, a little bit, hopefully, to cover the food. Um, but yeah, he's doing a, a lot of work.
All right. Sounds like you got, uh, people working on your behalf. I like it. And that's a good opportunity for new owners as well, obviously.
Yes.
So, it's a win-win there. We wanna, we wanna keep businesses and grant, so. Anything else? Jeff? Bob, Tom?
Yeah, well, you know, a couple of things. Public comment on what Kim said. I'd like to, I'd like to thank Kim for clearing up the whole issue with the, uh, engineer. Um, that, you know, it wasn't, uh, about, you know, going out for bids or going with the current engineering firm we had. It was, it was decided. It wasn't by the city council, but it was decided by her or somebody else that that's not what we were gonna do. And the city council had no input in that, and that's what it was. So, I, I wanna thank Kim for saying that, 'cause now that does answer a lot of questions I had. And I did talk to the engineer for public comment, and they were stonewalled and weren't allowed to transition a meeting or anything. They were not. And you know that, 'cause he called you too, after I told him to call you, 'cause I didn't know what was going on. So, that is true. And so, it, apparently, these decisions are being made that don't involve the city council, and I'm not happy about it sitting up here twenty-some years.
Yeah, well, in your, in your twenty years, let me just rebut that a little bit. First of all, he wasn't allowed. I had two conversations with him. He never asked.
Weeks, weeks before.
It's my floor right now. My floor. My floor. Never asked, never proposed anyone else, other than a beginning engineer who had never been a city engineer. We've been subjected to that before in your twenty years. We trained how many of them? Three? Three of them we trained, and so we got people that stayed. It was a nightmare, and you know it. I'm not quite sure where your loyalties are lying here with WSB or the city getting an engineer that's been here for years and years. So, where are your loyalties?
Procedure.
Procedure.
Yeah, procedure. You tell her where you're circling.
You have the opportunity to vote on the last packet. Did you or did you not on the engineer? You didn't have to keep Brad Reistec, and in fact, you voted not to. How did you want that written? You had it sitting at your house. Were you reading it for a week?
What are you talking about?
You had a packet. You had a packet. You read it for a week, and then you came here and complained.
I didn't have to read it for a week. I had no information. Then I'd find out that where did, where's the numbers? There was no numbers in the packet. Sometimes I get this, Jeff. I get something thrown on the desk at the last minute.
Yeah, a letter from residents?
I don't care.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
Totally, gentlemen, totally subverting the whole process.
Enough. Let me make this a lesson. When you get your packet, you have it for seven days. You have it for seven days.
Nothing to do with that.
If you have questions about your packet, you don't understand something. She's there almost full-time. My phone number gets answered all the time. Instead of coming to the table and going, "Well, I don't understand this. Nobody told me this. Why don't I get this?" That reminds me of who the two people I used to have here. That's exactly what they would do until they were chased off. They wouldn't read the packet. They'd come here and they'd get upset. That wasn't put away. They wanted to.
So, you didn't do the research.
You didn't do the research.
No, my, I had, I didn't need to do any research. We had something from Kim suggesting with Brad. I had nothing. I, it was, well, he, he was told there was not gonna be a vote on it that, that night, and there was.
I'll talk to them.
Who was told that?
Who was, yeah, he's making stuff up.
No, there's an email. You can look at the email. No, I'm...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to the public right now. If you get voted to be up here, you get these packets about a week in advance.
Has nothing to do with that.
It is your job as a councilman to read through it and not come up here and say, "Well, it's got nothing to do with it." I don't understand. I don't understand. You do the research before you get here. If you have questions, she's there, I'm here. You can ask a question anytime you like. This is not exactly how this should work.
No, it isn't. You're right, a hundred percent.
This complaining that someone didn't do their work, didn't do their work, and then wants to come in and complain.
Somebody didn't do their work and get the information to the city council so they can make a vote.
Tom.
No, that's what happened.
No, you're getting, you're getting worked up.
That, that's what happened. You know it's what happened.
So, just tell me this then. Why, no, it isn't.
Yeah, that's what happened.
Well, we're gonna start publishing this stuff.
You guys should.
And, and, and we're gonna chop this kind of downtown, 'cause that's, that stuff's not gonna be allowed to stand. You yelling, you yelling doesn't change anything.
Neither does your yelling.
No, I'm not yelling. I'm telling you, you should have, you should have done your research.
Well, I'm supposed to prepare the packet for myself? I, I didn't have a copy of Brad's numbers. Kim had a copy of Brad's numbers. I didn't have a copy. I was told... have a copy, I was told you were given a copy. I don't have a copy.
Hey, Kim, what was in the packet last month? Were there any numbers in there from the new firm?
No.
No?
Don't remember? That's what I'm saying, that's all I asked for last time.
It was noted, Mayor and councilmembers, it was noted in the packet that the costs were lower, and I apologize.
How would I know?
Why wouldn't you take my word for that?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Because we're councilmembers, that's our job, that's not your job.
You did make a decision.
I didn't, I tried to stop it and delay it.
So when I bring bids next for these aprons and stuff, I, I, yeah, I, and he could've called me and asked me to get the, the pricing.
Well, that's what's incredible, he's yelling at you because he didn't have the pricing in his packet, the packet that he had in his hand for a week.
No, 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 that's not even it, you're just not getting it, Jeff. No, the other company was stonewalled too, they weren't allowed even to submit anything.
Okay, well...
That's not true.
Okay, we got an email, there's an email, so...
I don't have an email.
Why don't you forward it?
Yeah, you sent an email.
Forward it to the clerk.
She has it, she's sent an email.
And then she'll forward it to us. Well, then let's get it forwarded on there.
There you go, that's all I'm asking for.
So we can take a look at that.
All right.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll stick to that process.
I didn't care if Brad was the engineer, that was not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the process. You can't be up here, I, I've been, I've been sitting here 20 some years to have somebody else making decisions for the council, and I know who that is or what that is.
That doesn't even make any sense.
Well, I, Kim just, no, no, I did vote, but I didn't, Kim just, no, no, listen, listen what I'm gonna say, Kim just summed it up, that's what not was in the packet, was in the packet to keep Brad. WSB wasn't in the packet, was not an option, she just said that. That's what you just said, you summed it up, you did it, but watch the minutes, that's what you said. No, I understand.
What he's doing is he's finding this tiny little...
No, 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 I'm, I'm explaining because that's what happened, and, and that is what happened.
No.
Yep, you know, so, all right, anyway, it doesn't matter, Kim said, you know, hey, it's contract signed, it's over with, so...
Staff made a recommendation to vote with the new company, but that was entirely a council decision.
Yeah, but we didn't have a choice on what we voted for, that, you, that's what you said, you just said that.
It's okay, it's okay.
Watch the tape.
Yeah, like I said to the public, it's our responsibility to do the research, he just told the clerk that he doesn't trust your numbers, he should've found out what his numbers were.
I can't do my research if I don't have the numbers.
Go ahead, Jeff, your turn.
Well, I mean, I, I, Tom, I understand your point, but when, like, for me, when I looked at the information, I looked at it as like we got a choice to keep Brad or not, and if I would've, you know, thought that, well, Brad wasn't doing a good job or whatever, then I would've probably said, I would've been in your camp, but like, well, could, let's get more information, other alternatives? But for me, I thought, okay, I wanna keep Brad, and I, I stated my reasons why, you know.
No, and I, that's fine for you.
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, you, you voted no.
Yep.
And if everyone else, or the majority, majority would've voted no, then it would've, we would've, you know, got the, the other bid, or you know, would've been forced to take a next action.
If we had all the information and Brad was the engineer, I wouldn't even care. That's not...
There was no other information required. On service contracts, just so that everyone knows, service contracts are not required to vote for bid. Normally, you decide, you decide whether or not the person doing the job is someone that you wanna retain, right? So Brad had been with us for years, he knows the city intimately, he's done most of our major road projects, he just negotiated approximately $200,000 in road improvements on the, the new development. He's also in the middle of somewhat of a contentious road project. So again, services are very different, if you look at the state 471-35, I believe, it lays out the differences between service contracts and capital contracts, so construction, materials, that type of thing. With service contracts, you're really voting on the person, because that's who you're hiring. The firm itself, in this case, didn't matter, because our engineer, our longtime engineer Brad, was moving somewhere else, the costs were lower. It was a pretty simple thing, Mr. Carr seems to feel that that decision was made for him, even though he voted. I voted the entire council, but Tom, we didn't have a choice, that's what Kim just said. It's a service contract, you always have a choice, you don't have to go out...
Hey, we just said the lowest price isn't always the best, and it's set up here tonight again.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna...
So, you know, using that analogy.
I'm not gonna get through to you, bud.
Nope, you're not.
Nope, not gonna get through to you. So any other comments, more comments? Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
I kind of, Tom, I disagree with you in the sense that if, if, if we feel as a council, if everyone feels like a decision isn't being made by us, we, we can vote, so if the, the rest of the council sided with you and felt like, okay, we're not being able to make this decision, we could've shut it down with a 3 to, 3 to 5 vote, and said, no, we want more information, we gotta go out to bid or whatever.
That's the way it works.
So, so I, I think we did make a decision at that point, but, so...
But, but somebody stepped up to the podium and said WSB, they didn't get a chance, they wanted to and they didn't get a chance, and that's true.
Is it?
Yeah, that's true.